It's no longer a specialty either. It has, it's this, alright? You guys don't need training to use this. And what my perspective is as far as the professional staff, that they're more than able. Of course, professional development never stops. And that our technology never stops. That it's going to continue to evolve. And what we're talking about today, three, five years from now, it could be something else. If we went back five or six years ago and I said, "Yeah, we're gonna be using Chromebooks." You'd be like, "Come on." You know, so it just goes that fast. So to training is constant. So restoring professional development is critical. But the staff has been exposed to this. And the thing is, we're not throwing in something that's a curveball to them. And so with that being said, the next piece I'll say is as far as the 390 or the 490 is concerned, a lot of that's restoration. When you think about it, it's not that it's all this new thing. It's restoration. Because we've just run the stuff into the ground. It's come to the end of its useful life. So I'll start there and I'll ask Mrs. Willard and Mrs. O'Leary to comment on, is the staff ready for this stuff? And they'll give you their perspective.
As I say, it's not just the staff ready. It's, it's one thing, I mean, I use a computer all the time.
Yes, sir.
You put me in the classroom, in fact, I teach at Endicott. And I gotta tell you, it's a big step from being able to run my life with my computer and taking advantage of all the educational software that's out there, using the curriculum management tools that are available to me. Endicott runs constantly, year-round, for their faculty. They constantly run training programs on how to take advantage of the things that the software has and so on. And all I'm saying is that it's one thing to be ready because, yeah, that'd be great, I'd find a way to use it. And saying, I know exactly what I want to do. I can't do it with the tools I have now. That's the distinction I'm looking at.
So I can give you a specific example. We have teachers just go to classes or they go to conferences. And they come back and they're excited to apply some sort of app or some sort of learning experience for their children. And our iPads currently don't have the operating systems to even let them upload the app. So we, you know, either from their, we have Endicott fellows that are coming and saying, "Oh, my gosh, in this class I just learned da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da." Can we download on this iPad? Or can my kid access this? Because they're having trouble reading or doing this. Yeah, that would be great, except the operating system is so old that we can't even access any of it. And I would say they're more than ready because what they've done, instead of waiting for restoration, is, I would say, eighty-eight percent of my staff have their own tools. Their own iPad, their own phone, their own MacBook, or whatever they have that they're working. And so they're using their own personal property because it just is not worth the spinning wheel that we've all seen over and over and over again while your kids are waiting. And that's where we're losing the student engagement, right? So technology and the free kid, three, is not just them sitting in front of computers, but it's that video on the Iditarod. Because I paid thirty-five dollars to watch the mushers in the last that go across. And, you know, Katrina has this musher and I have this musher. But guess what? Now the spinning wheel's going, so we can't see who's gonna win the last seven miles, right? Those are the authentic experiences that our kids are experiencing. Instead, they're waiting and waiting for the technology.
So that, to me, at one level, it's a sort of a hardware-software issue I hear you talking about. In other words, even what we want to be able to do. I just think it's important to keep an eye on the professional development piece.
Yeah, and so can I add that?
Because so many places buy stuff and it's underutilized.
Yeah, so I would also add the professional development piece. In, you know, my sixteen years in education, you have to provide time for teachers, right? You have to provide that collaboration time. It used to, my first couple of years in education, have to happen in schools in that environment and people would have to stay till seven. I have teachers that are constantly collaborating through technology, all night long, through lesson planning or this and that, whether it's through Google Classroom or look what I found here, look what I found there. So it's that collaboration between the teachers that's providing, they're providing their own professional development without even doing it with the access that they have to the technology we're giving them.
And I'd just like to add that we've been working in the pretty in-depth professional development program over the last number of years within technology. So just what you described, John, about what they're doing at Endicott, we've been doing here in Topsfield. So we've had, we call them tech talks. And for, you know, I think they've been happening for four to five years now. Weekly, different tools are being explored, being brought to the classroom. And much of those are teacher taught. So teachers teaching teachers how to use them. And then any of our other professional development always has an aspect of how can you use technology as a teaching tool to then bring those, you know, bring that curriculum alive, to connect with SEL, you know, attributes. You know, it's really looked at very globally. So, you know, our professional development plan had really targeted specifically technology, but then how to integrate all of those tools into the other parts of learning.
I'm encouraged by what you're saying, so thank you.
And I would just add that this ask, this number, wasn't just sort of thrown out there. I mean, it was, there has been a lot of research that went into it by our Director of Technology. And he surveyed all the teachers as well on, you know, what their needs were. So it's not just, I think sometimes in education, things become like a top-down push, right? And this really isn't that. It's the input from the teachers has been taken into consideration in this ask.
Since we're just in the details, we got, how much of what and what was the other? I assume that the laptops are basically for the teachers and that the Chromebooks and iPads are for the students. Order of magnitude is about five hundred and fifty, specifically five hundred and forty-six devices. So we're close to trying to get to a one-to-one? Is that what we're trying to achieve?
Equitable access is the term.
There's six hundred students in five...
Right, equitable access is the term that we're...
Yeah, we're pretty close to one-to-one though, right? Go ahead, Sarah.
I just wanted to say that many of the Chromebooks that are being ordered are for teachers as well.
So a laptop and a Chromebook?
No, they're, I mean, I can just speak to at Proctor that we're getting the teachers' Chromebooks and not getting, so they're not laptops. So we just had it together in a category.
What's the difference between a laptop and a Chromebook? I've seen the Chromebooks that are laptops. I've never seen one that's so standard.
A Chromebook, a Chromebook, in my description, you know, it works off of Google.
Right.
And it is almost, I will call it, do I remember better term? Dumb terminal. Whereas when you look at a laptop, it has a motherboard, a hard drive, can download software, so on and so forth. Everything you do with a Chromebook is web-based.
I get right up with that.
And so that's why it is a very, it's a less expensive tool. Around three hundred plus per unit is what we specify, which includes the unit, a five-year Google license, and what we call a white glove service. So that it's turnkey when we take it out of the box.
Is that a tablet?
No, it's, it looks just like a laptop, little smaller than what Miss DeGan has. You know, thirteen minutes maybe? Maybe picking the screen, right off the top of my head, something like that.
And I think because of the age of students and the curriculum that you're providing, different tools are necessary for different, teachers of different ages. So Carol's looked very closely at her staff and the tools that they need. So they might be a little bit different than the tools that we might need at Proctor. So we really try to be aware of what the best teaching methods were and what the tools were in order to provide that. And so they might look a little different across grade levels, but they're what we need in order to provide that service for kids.
One other question to ask. Was any consideration given to some form of mimicking Masco's program? Where the one-to-one is, the key is that parents provide it. And for students who cannot afford it, the school has a stockpile of base laptops that they can use. The benefit being, having worked hard to get a device-neutral program, it no longer locks people into buying an Apple if they're, you know, a Chromebook family or vice versa, or anything like that. And by all accounts, it's worked really well. And it allows the parents who feel that their students can't survive without a thirty-five-hundred-dollar laptop to indulge themselves. And those that know that a three-hundred-dollar computer is gonna keep them up at class can be smart and buy that. Your own judgment?
No, no, so just to make sure I understand really the premise of the question. The question is, have we considered parents purchasing at this time?
Or even bringing the ones they have at home?
You know, so there are legit for us, you know, no, we're not there yet. We've not, we've not engaged in a policy of bring your own device. And there are, in my opinion, there's logistical issues with that. That this person may have a Unit A, this one may have a Type B, and there could be compatibility issues with regards to software, so on and so forth. So I understand that Masco may have success with this. I think that we would have to investigate that further if that was something that we were going to consider, to make sure that we address compatibility issues for all students. That if you brought in an iPad and the other one had a Chromebook, and we go to a website to access whatever software or whatever application that is, and it isn't compatible on one board together, so then it creates a problem in the classroom.
No, I know there has to be management of how you do that. Device-neutral strategy.
Yes.
But it can be done, we're working...
I'm not saying it can't be done. We're just not, we're not there yet.
I'm sort of saying, I accept that you're not there and so on. I look at the computers and based upon your estimated cost, essentially you're talking over a million dollars just on that. And if that was something that students had access to if they needed, but we didn't have to provide. I'm just looking at all the alternatives. But it's perhaps not relevant to the discussion as now any further. But something to think about because it does then take not only the cost of the maintenance out of the district's hands. And you also aren't in a position where you're coming back and saying, you know, we need to start replacing seventy-five of our laptops this year. We're bringing it back to the community.
And I would add at the elementary level, we're pushing apps out all the time. And so in order to push those out to all individual personal devices, it would get interesting pretty quickly. So right now, we push them out, you know, especially with the younger iPad, you know, here. And if we ever, but you're using this specific app that's loaded on every single school iPad at this point in time, that would be more difficult if that wasn't, you know...
No, I understand there are some technical issues, but my point's made and I appreciate it. I support the idea, what you're thinking.
Kelly, I wanna put you in the spot back. I just wanted to go back to Lynn's discussion about possibility of funds in this fiscal year. Is it, you know, is that a possibility? Is it a tempest of possibility? Is it...
It's a different possibility. The question is exactly what level is available. And, but Lynn, we don't have any blizzards between now and April Fool's Day.
Guess what she's talking about?
Traditionally, we can, we traditionally set aside money for snow and ice emergencies. I know that we do, we're fortunate enough to not have any. So I feel relatively confident that we do have an amount, certainly not three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, but certainly an option for us to consider if we have to make, you know, one, perhaps even allow us to dent in some of the requests.
Would that, would that be a transfer for a special town meeting? Is that a...
It would either be, yes, it would be a bunch of transfer or it could be a potential warrant article. Either way.
But it's a, but it's town meeting action.
It's town meeting action, yes.
Just to clarify for the audience, many of you may already know this. Special town meeting, we use to vote things that need to be accomplished for this fiscal year. So, you know, that bill that wasn't paid, those sorts of things. The town meeting warrant is for FY '20, so we don't spend that money until the next year. So we talk about doing transfers in a special town meeting. It's not that the article in itself is special as much as were we to see a path to do something. Special town meeting would allow to do it the way that Steve could go out and spend money before June...
Thank you, I'll never understand.
It just has to be spent by fiscal nineteen, which is why the question is Steve about if they're ready.
We spent it this year, but it's not the next year.
To elaborate a little bit more, there are line items in the 2019 budget that didn't all get spent.
Right.
I mean, we had overestimated or something or other.
Gotcha.
So there's, there's what we call tailings that are left in certain things. And that's what Lynn was talking about. Trying to put together some of those tailings to...
No, we're doing a commenting right now to make sure that we can use a special town meeting in the budget transfer article as sort of a cleanup.
So I think Catherine was...
Well, just to clarify, if there's a warrant article, the June thirtieth timeline doesn't apply to that. So, which gets back to, if it's a one-time capital person, it could be done...
Then it could be done sooner than the town money.
This fiscal year, then. So if this is a special town meeting warrant article, then it would go in, that warrant article carries over year after year.
Gotcha.
You know, we've got some pressure in terms of using it, you know, sooner than later. And it would give them time to follow the stewardess.
Okay. But the benefit is that if we put money, because we had one situation where a bid came in and saved us six figures, that's in an approved fund that was voted for. We can't spend it on anything else unless town meeting, which approved it, approves putting it into another account because we could use it there and we're not gonna need it here. Otherwise, it kind of sits there until we take some action. So it's a way of taking all those bits that are left over. It's like when you put coins in your sofa and your armchair and under the kitchen table and pulling it together and saying, "Okay, now let's vote to put them here and there," whatever.
Excuse me, Mark, I wanted to make a comment about the overall way we're looking at this. Is there gonna be a moment for that?
No, not right now.
No?
Okay, you were at the conversations about the select. Anybody else have anything on this? Dick, did you want to say something?
So I too am concerned about how much the town would be willing to approve for an override, if we were to do an override. I think we need to be extremely careful with that. We need to understand what these requirements are that are laid out beyond what is available in the current levy limit. Because one way or the other, these things need to be explained to the people that are interested in voting on it if it's in an override. What is it, why are we doing it for an override? And so I think it's important that we understand those things and that the school committee, so to speak, schools can articulate this over the next month. If there's an override of a certain amount, what the difference by having that override? So, you know, thinking of how we might do an override and what might be in the override, I think it's important to consider what the people will be thinking, what will be able to be communicated by the school committee, so to speak, as to what it's doing for them. We talked about the FinCom recommendation and that I agree with what was said here. Certainly, we have the experience. And town meeting, if the FinCom approves something, it has a much different chance of being approved than if FinCom recommends no action. Interestingly enough, it has an effect on town meeting, as I said. But its effect on the ballot is totally different. FinCom is not talking at town ballot, right? It's not what it's happening. So, anybody thinking about that, that we want to... The, that we have, if it is an override, there's a two-step approach. The first one being town meeting. And if you have a positive approval on the part of the FinCom, that's positive, you get it through. The next step, if it's an override, at ballot does not have the same informatory...
It's a different context.
It's a different context. And people aren't looking at the FinCom as much at that point in time. So I just wanna say that we've gotta keep that in perspective as we think about how much it is.
But if you, I'm sure you'll agree, if you don't carry the town meeting...
If you don't, you gotta carry both. If it's an override issue, you've got to carry both of them. Either one of them, if they fail, means that the whole thing has failed.
And historically, I point out that when we have passed overrides, the margin of passage at town meeting is typically much higher than it is at the ballot box. The reason being that those who care about it come out and vote, they get the... And so there'll be lots of parents there. So the challenge is that a lot of folks who may come to town meeting and sit quietly or may not come to town meeting, and whether just they feel they can't afford it or they don't understand the issue or they disagree with it, may show up. When you look at the number of people who come to vote compared to the number who show up for town meeting, you can see where the challenge is there. So I think Dick's exactly right that we have to sort of think about getting through both steps, not just what seems like the easier one based upon what we hope would be a FinCom recommendation.
So we do talk about the history of overrides. And certainly in the near years, even the last decade, I think you should all be proud of the town. I mean, in a sense, the town has come out strongly and supported overrides. It hurts when it comes to the tax dollar, no question about that. But the citizens then come forward. And we know what we've had at elementary schools recently, the fifteen and seventeen. And again, the towns have supported strongly. There was another one sometime ago on Massana. That was a Air Whiskers. We've gotten about less than a handful. Two handfuls of both. But the two elementary schools that we've had, in seventeen again, were passed well. Now, there was a tremendous amount of effort, I know, on that first one of those. I can't remember, they took the donut shop. They, it used to be, the old donut shop.
Yes, bagel store.
That was the war, bagel shop. Thank you. That was the war room for a month that they put in to get it over. And again, it was, it had strong support of the community. But those were in the category of this one hundred and fifty, two hundred dollar range. We're, there's inflation, we say there's inflation. But I think we need to be very cognizant of what we've had in the past and what the people have approved as a guideline to us. Having the responsibility to make sure that when we arrive at July first and the town's trying to do things and the schools are trying to make their plans and that, they have a reasonable amount of resources to do it and they're not caught short. I think going with the entire amount... I've actually talked to... Park, this was, who said, "I don't think I'd vote for that." I've heard that, interestingly enough. And as you point out, when you, perhaps, we've all been getting letters on both sides of the aisle as far as all of the, perhaps, the effort has been to get the pass. We've, other people have been listening and I've been there from the other side of the aisle. So those are some of the thoughts I had as to what we would consider. Understand what the things are here, practice on this and what we're trying to do within those things that are requested.
One of the things that people were asking for was to understand the dollar impact to their taxes of an increase. It came about in the back of the town hall and what would the impact be, et cetera. And Kelly had done an estimation at each of the various levels here. And the top one, for a million dollars, came out to about four hundred and fifty dollars is the average tax impact with that million dollars. So, which is significant. And if that's shared with people as a lump sum, that could dissuade them. That's a large figure. If it's broken down into smaller pieces and more digestible, it might be amenable to some of those performance. First, it's just an all or nothing. We want everything or...
And to be realistic with, when the people are told about it, that's delta, that's important to understand. But people also are thinking about next year, regardless of what happens with an override or not an override, what's happening to the taxes. So it's not, that's not the only increase that we're going to see unfortunately.
That's on town.
I'd like to think that we could not have an increase in taxes. But it's the whole piece that people are also looking at. The delta's very important here. But it's delta on top of what is also going on that affects people.
I'd just make a comment that we all, I think we all recognize here that if we do this multi-year approach, which I said that I would prefer, we don't know what this group is gonna look like in a year or two. And we don't know what the FinCom's gonna look like in a year or two. So this becomes a reselling job every year.
Yep.
And that's, and that's a potential problem too that we recognize.
Well, it's good that you talk about selling us importance. But it also relates to the citizens.
Of course.
But we need to be careful of, just logically, that is, to have the citizens have confidence in what we're doing today, yesterday, and into the future. If we do things that give the citizens a sense that they do not have confidence in what we're recommending, that it's reckless, even if something passes once, the next year, it may not. Because people rethink it. And rethink of, did I, do we really have to have that? Why weren't they telling us we had to do that? Why did they put it on? So the idea, I believe, is that what we need to do is first of all, responsible, and then communicate to the citizens what we've done is responsible.
Well, you've all heard what my position is, that I'm somewhat of a gambler. But I wouldn't walk into Las Vegas with a million bucks in my pocket and roll the dice once.
I wouldn't do it.
So before we turn the conversation to the next level of, again, at least a lot of those sets of committee trying to formulate an approach, any individual selected or anything further to say?
Okay.
Dan, I didn't really be rude and I don't like to cut off on it Dan, I didn't mean to be rude, and I don't like to cut off on it, or to keep it somewhat worldly. We've, last two weeks, I don't, I guess I can't say average, but basically my cell is about to go up at six fifteen A.M. tomorrow. I'm not exaggerating, which is fine.
You what?
My cell phone is about six fifteen A.M. So I just, well, as I know, I haven't been here though, you waited till eight, by now. But it's not, it's not...
So you can do it tomorrow.
We've heard the opinions or whatever. If you have something that's an add, then go ahead, I don't mean to cut you off.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate that. Well, I think I do, you guys be the judge of it. You know, I just wonder if we're framing the whole thing incorrectly. I just wonder if rather than looking at it as multi-year, we ought not look at it as multi-choice, multiple choice, right? And lay everything out for the voters in compartments so that they can decide on each one. I worry that, you know, it's been said that it's a shame that we've gotten ourselves into this position, but I think the very thing you're considering here today is going to get us into an even worse position or keep us in that same position so that four years from now they'll be saying, well, why didn't the town board of selectmen four years earlier take care of all of this, because now we have all of these other additional needs? I look at the, like, the analogy might be, I need new gutters on my house and I need to paint the house. And so under the thinking of responsibility, I say, all right, I'm going to fix half the gutters this year, and next year I'll take care of the other half of the gutters. Then the year after that, I'll take care of painting the house. In the meantime, the water heater has gone out, right? So you've got to think about that as well. None of this is enhancement. This whole thing is catch-up, and we need to get to a level playing field with Bauxford and Middleton in technology and not go below that. So I think if we could, when I think about responsibility, there's fiscal responsibility, but there's also a responsibility to the literacy of the voters, right? None of us would want to say that what we're doing is censoring the information going out to the voters about what the schools really need, because I think that's another level of responsibility. If we only show them a portion of the picture to vote on, then they're not seeing the cumulative effect of all of the things that we need. So even when the FinCom, the word responsibility gets used a lot with good faith, I get it, but what if we're actually not being responsible? Like, when the FinCom talks about, we're not asking for debt here, right? Like, none of us is talking about debt. To me, when the discussion of responsibility gets engaged when you're talking about debt, is it responsible to incur more debt for the town? That's not what we're talking about. If the town voted for it, then it's all paid for. So there's not an issue of, you know, financial responsibility vis-à-vis our bond rating or anything. What the FinCom is basing their decision on is what they feel the voters would or wouldn't go for, and the board of selectmen is doing that as well. And I think we really have a responsibility to find a way to let the voters finally, once and for all, see where the schools really are at and what they need, and let them decide. Because ultimately, the voters have the ultimate financial responsibility for the town. Prop two and a half didn't say, prop two and a half said limit property taxes to two and a half percent. If you want to go over that, you got to ask the voters. Prop two and a half never said, don't ask the voters for more than this amount because they might not go for it. So I would like to see, how can we present the whole package in sections to the town so that they see that we're one of the few towns that doesn't have full-time kindergarten? Our teachers, seventy percent of our teachers have laptops that are seven to ten years old. Bauxford and Middleton each spend eighteen thousand dollars per student, and as a result of this kicking the can down the road, we're spending fifteen thousand dollars a year. We need to get up to speed on technology, we need to maintain level service, we need to click back, click. I think we need to show the town that whole picture and let the town decide, have faith in the town and the intelligence of the voters to say yay on this, no on that, but to censor information, to let them only see part of the picture. I think we've done that too often, and they really need to see the whole picture now. So I would encourage that you, can you use your brainstorming and your creativity to find a way, I don't know what the legality of it is, but to show the town options, both at town meeting and then at the ballot, so that none of this, so that they're not under the impression that they've taken care of everything, right? Because that's another issue of your responsibility. If they vote in a six hundred thousand dollar override, they think, wow, we did really something great for the schools and we don't need to deal with that for another three or four years. Well, that's not the truth, because we didn't deal with the whole thing. We now need to deal with the other three or four hundred thousand next year, plus whatever additional deficit we're running. So I get there's a good faith effort to be responsible here, but I actually think we're not being responsible.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's not the day where we need to hear the various arguments again and again.
Well, I'm just trying to propose a new approach, you know, like multiple choice instead of multiple years.
I really don't want to be rude, and I mean that, right? It's very disheartening for me to hear the word censorship about what this board is trying to do, and I respectfully couldn't disagree with that word choice.
Oh, it's not meant to be evil, Mark, it's like, but if you, if we don't show the voters anything, we are censoring, right?
Please don't put you in a situation to start the dialogue, right? I respectfully disagree with that. Frankly, it's personally offensive.
Well, it's not meant in a personal way at all.
Monday night, it will be, well, that's how it's being received.
Well, why would you take it personally? I didn't, I didn't make any personal...
Because I've heard it again and again, we're not here to censor. I respect your viewpoint, I've heard it, everybody else has heard it, some of us have a different viewpoint. It's also disheartening to hear that I put hours and hours and hours into trying to get forged together a coalition of people that can help the schools, hoping that there will be a very high number, but it's not enough unless it's one hundred percent of the ask. I find that disheartening, I'm going to move forward.
But it's okay if somebody has that feeling. Everybody's allowed to have their own feeling.
Absolutely. I never said that, but some of us dig, are able to have it.
But could I speak to what we said, Katrina provided some data, you were there too probably, at the FinCom meeting about the cost of education and that? Because there were some things that what Dan said that almost suggest that maybe we're not funding properly. We know, and we have graphs, it's very obvious, if we want to compare ourselves to something else, you know, it's always, how are we doing compared to something else? Typically, it's Bauxford, Middleton, and Topsfield as a comparison group. We know that the funding, over the years, over the last, since state, the state has the numbers for thirty years or something, but we know over the time that our funding has been compatible with Middleton and Bauxford. Now, what happened at the FinCom meeting is Katrina brought some new money, new information that had just come from the state about how much our, how much the three towns were providing in education for 2018. In other words, the last school year, the one that ended in June. And that was dramatic, for Topsfield, it was dramatically different than it's been for the last ten years in that we were not sticking with the rest of them. That's a concern. My feeling is there's going to be a lot of egg on somebody's face when we find out why that happened, because we know it hasn't happened from what we have funded, we know the state has grossly changed the amount, certainly not chapter seventy, grants and such somewhat perhaps, somewhere there's a problem with the number. So it's something we need to work out, but I'm worried somebody's going to be too backed by the time it comes out. So I have to set that number aside. But again, if I look for the last ten years, we just track right, and as a matter of fact, we tend to track right in between the two, and as of eighteen, the numbers are very clear, we are right in between Middleton and Bauxford. Bauxford is two percent more than we are, Middleton is two percent less. So the question becomes, how is it that they're doing this, the technology, the kind of thing that Dan said, they're doing the technology better than us, they're doing this, I think we get to the point that we need to ask the question, what are they doing better than we are? How can we, can't do the same thing for the same money? And I think that's going to come up at some point. I appreciate you bringing up the dollars, Dan, because it really brings it to light if we're that much and we're so far behind in this and that, why are we doing differently? And it isn't, why are they doing better than we are? We've got to figure that out at some point. But that's not for today, but it is something we have to figure out.
We need to move our process forward because we have time limitations, like tonight as much as on the calendar, we have definite days that we have to get the warrant out at some point. So I'm going to ask, again, I respect every member's right to bring forward a motion, I'm going to ask that we refrain from formal votes until Monday night, give us some time between now and the jury thing, what we're doing. I feel I shouldn't hold us to a lesser standard than I did to the FinCon, and I asked them and they were kind enough to give us a sense, so I'll use that same framework. I'm consciously holding off on this review of all the structures that are available under the board, because I'm first going to look at something that I think is simple and therefore more understandable and less likely of causing misunderstandings with the board when it goes to the ballot.
Well, this is a good start, but it gives, and it gives us something to think about.
So I'm going to put forward the following, and by all means, can be rejected, modified, whatever, but something like this. An override warrant article for the general school operating budget, give or take in the amount of five ninety-three oh sixty-eight. Embedded in that is the hope that two people on the FinCon will find a fight and be able to get a majority to support that. I imagine I'm very dedicated to moving forward something with a thumbs up on the FinCon. So that would be the first element. I contemplate that not excluding continuing the hundred and seventy thousand dollar security system. That does not need an override. Okay, so that would be great. So I would do a separate warrant article for that. It's in our draft.
Yes.
Okay. Add a hundred and seventy. Yeah, right. Okay. So that would be, and I don't want to hang up on the word, but for description, the restoration level, the secure, plus the security systems level, we took care of the scrubber, and plus some approach to technology, I'm going to put forward the concept that's a two-year plan, if we can get some out of this, or three years, if we can get something out of this year, but I'd like to see us get to the halfway point, which is either two hundred or two fifty, depending on how many people. And that, I don't, I guess I'd go, I'd depend on the FinCon seeing whether or not they could, depending on if we can get any this year, fund the ballots without an override. So again, in my particular viewpoint, likelihood of success, that's an approach that just estimate the ballot on a basic level and can very honestly and clearly be described as pretty much just getting back the services that the schools need, whatever wording people use for that. It's also, of course, in the concept that it's a bottom line budget in the school, what they can do. There's a scenario.
So just to clarify here, you said that the one seventy, the security system is a warrant article. The question in part, though, is, is the funding available to pay for?
That's what I just asked.
And that's really, it's kind of like what the FinCon is saying, they're willing to put the money against.
Right, but that's what I just asked. You went on for, I'm sorry.
So you're accepting, you're accepting what the FinCon has said about it, about the security system?
It's on the warrant currently, they have to make a recommendation based on what available for investors at this point in time.
But as we see it, there may be X number of things.
That goes back to the beginning, that's not in here?
Right, right.
Okay, so it would be, it's a potential override.
Because it's not in here, it's not in here.
So it's a potential override if the FinCon can't find funds.
It's, okay, as long as we have that clarification.
Thank you. And same thing with technology.
Yes.
We're hoping we could do some mix.
I suspect there's a little difference between the technology and the security, and maybe Steve can help us on it. In the case of technology, you can go partial. You can buy laptops only, or you can buy ProBucks or what, in other words, if they have a pot of a hundred thousand or two hundred, there's things that they can do with it. In the case of the security, I suspect that it is all or nothing. Now, maybe that's not the case, maybe you could go with half of it for Proctor School one year and half the next year for the other school. I don't know, apparently the way Middleton's going, they're just putting it into form at an hour, they're planning to put it into the other school later. But can you help us on that, Steve? Is it something that, is it an all or nothing in the case of the security system? Or would you split it, or, just so we understand what is an option?
Okay, and this is my answer. You've got nothing now. You need all of it. That's my answer.
And also for the two schools.
That's both schools, you need all of it.
And I'd like to point out that if it ends up remaining as a separate warrant article as we currently have in our own drafts and so on, it's sometimes a lot easier, sadly to say, both in terms of the country and nobody else, selling on safety is sometimes an easier sell than selling on education. And one of the things that I think is potentially positive is, from my view, not putting that piece of safety into what is largely an educationally gold budget is appropriate, because I do think we need to consider it separately. It's a sad case to have to spend that much on what some would term as insurance, or, you know, we may never need it, but it's a little bit like, you know, we take chances all the time. It's a very different thing when we have responsibilities, these are kids, and unfortunately, the trends that indicate a need for this kind of a thing are continuing to increase, not flatten out, not go down. So I'm personally fairly confident that the security system piece can pass on its own two feet. So, and I would be very strongly, as you say, you know, and I hate to say it, in terms of this, the seventy dollars is, it's a lot to change, but it's affordable for the security it will help provide.
In part, the question goes like this, if it needs to go in an override, not towards the ballot, that has certain risks to it.
Oh, I understand.
So the question was, can we do it quietly? And the answer is, I gather, no. And I understand that, no.
Okay.
Are you going to buy a half a car or a whole car? Well, I can't buy a half a car, that's not an option. And I think that's the case here, but I just wanted to find out, because maybe that we could come up with a hundred out of free cash or something like that and not go to ballot and get, well, half of what we want, and then the next year get half.
Reasonable question, yeah.
That's why the question was asked.
Okay, and I made...
And what is the same no or what yes to it, is to understand what our options are. And now I know what our options are, it's zero or all.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can I just ask, is that from a technical, mechanical perspective, or from a, we need to protect all the kids, which is totally understandable, but can you buy a system for Stuart? Is it standalone than the system that you buy for Proctor?
Well, what we have is the difference between where we were in Middleton and where we are in Topsfield. The system that we put in in Middleton, we already had something to work with, we had a framework in place, we had some networking in place, we had some wires in place, and so we were starting from not zero when we were putting a system in place. In Topsfield, we'd be starting at a zero base, we don't have any sort of backend devices that can store information. So there is the technological component to it, along with all the devices that go along with it, along with all the networking cables that would have to be pulled, so it's starting from, you know, a zero as opposed to starting at like a fifty.
Are the schools linked in any way, or?
They will be, they will be.
Okay, so then that does answer the question that they are connected.
Yeah, they will be. I mean, the ultimate goal is all six schools are linked across the tri-tem, for obvious reasons.
So again, the proposal, trying to make sure people are at that number, the proposal rounded off, six hundred plus, I'm going to say two fifty is eight fifty plus one seventy, so that's about it.
It's close to the target.
Over guidance.
But half a million under the original request.
Totally, yeah.
Request. Which I don't want to minimize because of its significance, but...
Yeah, well, as we said, we have no ability to promise anything on future boards, it certainly doesn't preclude that next year's board from moving forward.
The last comment I'd like to make about if we did, and I'm not staking a position on this directly, but if the board did end up saying, okay, override of six hundred excluding the technology and security system, that they did only that six hundred, in light of what you do get, given the fact that funds are fungible, I would expect there would be a reevaluation of, you know, when you're thinking is about the whole thing, sometimes, you know, we're going to remodel the whole house. What you might think of is we'll do this first, then we'll do this, then we'll do that. If you know you've only got the money to do half of it or two-thirds of it, then you might change your strategy a little bit, both in terms of what you do now and in terms of how and what you choose to ask for in the future. So there's a piece of that that would give me confidence that internally within the administration, there'd be some thought and consideration to, do we need to move things a little bit and so on? But we as a town would be expecting that five ninety-three to do as is the sale chief says, which is to restore to level services and to, excuse me, to bring level services, maintain level services, and to restore lost positions. As long as those things are done, there's some stuff in here that, you know, as I'm just sort of saying, there may be a little bit of wiggle room, so, but if you guys can figure out.
One of the things that I was...
Scott wanted to just respond to something.
Mark, it's okay for this, a quick comment. Just, hey, thank you to all the boards in town, we appreciate the work that everybody does together on this, so just know that, it's very much appreciated from all of us. Just a little bit of context that I think is probably just helpful for the boards here, just in terms of, you know, all the work that's been done on the budget this year in Topsfield and certainly all the work that we've been doing for the past two and a half years around the model of education that we're trying to build for our kids. We're trying to develop a broader and deeper student experience for our kids and trying to create a broader and deeper student experience, excuse me, a broader and deeper experience for our staff as well. I was at a conference on Wednesday, or Tuesday, rather, out at Amherst, and it was the Commissioner of Education who had convened this conference, is a brand new Commissioner of Education. And I was excited to hear him talk about a lot of the things that we've been having conversations on in our three towns for the past two-plus years. And it's really this forward vision, forward-looking vision of where this model of education for our kids should go. And the basic quote here is that we need to prepare kids for their future and not our past, and that's really been all the discussions that we've had internally for the past two-plus years. I just want to read up a couple of quick statements from Jeff Riley, who's the Commissioner of Education, who led the session for us out at Amherst this past Tuesday. We're graduating today from Ed Reform. Ed Reform, as you recall, from nineteen ninety-three, we had twenty-five years of education reform in Massachusetts. It was a very compliance-based model of education that, in my opinion, the opinion of many, really narrowed the curriculum in terms of what our kids were doing in their classrooms. And again, these are Jeff Riley's words, we're on the cusp of another important shift. The next twenty-five years of public education, what would that look like for our kids? The fate of our students rests on it, and deeper learning is what is needed in the classroom. And when he talks about deeper learning, he talks about engaging our students in learning and getting them involved in the problem solving and deeply engaging in the tasks to problem solve. But there was one thing that he said in particular, I'll just close with this, that really resonated with me. He was talking about Massachusetts, so just know that he was speaking about the state. We've been number one on various metrics for a long time, and that's great. We've been number one on various metrics for a long time, and that's great, Massachusetts is really considered a leader across the country. But he's, these are his words, "He is scared to death that we are Blockbuster," and I thought that was an interesting sort of visual, right? So Blockbuster Video thought they had the market cornered, right, with, you know, we'll rent video cassettes and people will have them. They never thought about Netflix, Netflix might be streaming videos, and that might be a different business model that we need to look at. And so, again, the Commissioner talked about we need to be Netflix and not Blockbuster, and I was happy to hear that because the conversations that you're having and the conversations that we're having in the school committee and really among our leadership team with our teachers is, what can this look like? How do we build and make sure we have the foundations and the building blocks in place to ensure that we can provide this model of education for our kids? And it's a model that's very much focused on the three areas that we have made our pillars in our school district, which are project-based learning and innovative teaching practices, social-emotional learning and inclusionary practices. And that's really been what we're going to build on in the next couple of years. So I just, I wanted to provide that context, I think it was very exciting for me to hear at the state level that the Commissioner of Education is engaged in the same conversation that we're engaged in here in Topsfield and in our other two towns in the tri-ten as well. So I'll leave it at that, again, just close it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
I assume you're right in the VCR.
There are no tech plan, Mark, there are no VCRs in the tech plan, I guarantee you that.
Robert Chicken.
You've got an eight-track study.
Robert Chicken, you remember Robert Chicken?
Oh, yeah. I know a couple of them. I took my computer to store the other day to get it fixed and he said, my God, you're still using Windows seven? Come on, get out of here. That's what we've got here.
Eighteen seventy-seven.
This is the third time I'm gonna try, but I have to persist, and again, I think in fairness, I was persistent with the Finance Committee, we don't need a roll call vote, people can suggest a revision. I guess first I'm gonna ask whether or not there is a support amongst this board for the scenario I laid out.
I started when it turned up, Scott. So at the end of last, yesterday's meeting, I asked about provisions that we'd like to use to hold harmless Title I loss. Did you get anything from Katie?
Yes, she did, and it said, yes, we could do the kind of thing that you want.
There is a way to do that.
Yeah, there is a way to do it. Just again, I'm a little more direct.
That's the answer this one, okay.
I wanna keep it at a certain level, obviously, before we vote or whatever, by all means, bring up that structure or possible, okay? They did, and yes, you can, and there's a couple ways to do it. Katie liked her response, okay. So again, whether it's yes or no, you wanna go to something else, but we won't have accomplished what we need to today to be able to go forward in the time that we need to with actual votes and so on.
Yes.
Well, I'm not voting yet, but I'm inclined to support your.
I'm inclined something less than that. Again, recognizing what we've been before with overrides and what people have accepted and what has, so, okay, this is the way to do it. But it's not necessarily a single override, see, that's first override, something less than what you just said there. And then I would see something that we would give people a chance to go for a novel level. But the first level I would feel more comfortable was less, and as long as the people are going to support it, and we're putting in that second level because it's important, these things are important, it gives the people the option to go ahead and do it. But my first option would be less than that, less than you have suggested.
Okay, and I'm not gonna ask you for a number vote, with whatever your thing of is less, would you then be able to support the security systems and something for tech or just the less?
I would be interested in supporting the security and some tech, but I hold that separate because it is not an ongoing expense that is a two and a half override for operating purposes. It is either a capital override or the use of free cash.
Right, but I'm trying to get a sense of the ready in terms of funding.
So for funding purposes, I would see working, because I sense the priority given by the schools is, of the two, I, okay, we understand the operating and I do separate it out because that's an ongoing thing, have to do that.
It's big.
So within the security and the technology, I sense from the schools that they're saying that the security is most important. We have nothing is the words that we get from Steve Ringberg, so I would put that as a higher priority. And then, because as I said, with technology, any amount, so to speak, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand would be useful. We need to see where we are in it and whether we want to go with an override with capital. That, I think, I think there's gonna be a problem with that, maybe not as much for security, but I think on the technology side, from what I've seen in the past coming out of the town, I think that that might be a hard question. I want to try to keep, I'd rather get a hundred thousand within two and a half than two hundred thousand on an override that fails.
I don't know how to do this except to ask everybody one of the times, okay?
I'm an idealist, so I'm also a pragmatist, which makes me very concerned that we not put ourselves in a position where we just aren't gonna get people to come along. And I frankly don't have too much doubt, but if your budget increased fifty percent and gave you four million, you could come up with a really fantastic plan that would truly use that money wisely, it could ever pass. And so to ask almost spoils the soup a little bit, in other words, we want to ask what can really be justified. When I look at this total grant request of one point six million, what I like is one seventy on the security systems, I think that's a must-do. I'm so keen on technology and the value of it, but as a selling point, essentially cutting that down to maybe two fifty or something like that, that's the number I used. Then I took the core level services and restoration, and when I add all those up, I get a million thirteen roughly. And I personally think some enhancements are important. If it's a pillar of your philosophy going forward, that last one you mentioned is inclusion. And the value of inclusion on the students at Masco, I've had the good fortune to see, we work really hard with that now, and the impact on them as individuals is dramatic. When I see twenty-eight thousand, that to me is, I know it's a drop in the bucket, but you have to start by putting a drop in the bucket, not that you haven't already been doing that. And I would wonder about maybe if it was one full-time equivalent sped and click expansion, that adds seventy-two. To round things off, I come up with a number that is a million eighty-five, one million eighty-five thousand dollars, and the selling point would be that a full third plus has been carved out.
I just, I'm not trying to argue against you, I just don't know if you're doing the numbers right, or if you are, because the whole ask is a million near above.
I'm looking at the total grant request, grand total request, I'm working from that number. I'm working from that bottom number.
Can you please not, just whatever sense that you want, oh, you've already taken out the one seventy and you've set two fifty to the three ninety?
Two fifty to the three ninety.
So then we gotta work up on this, just saw it was the apples.
Why don't you ask Lynn while I do a little more arithmetic?
Okay, thank you.
I'm in line with you, I think that it's critical to bring up to the restoration level. And just to address the point about putting everything out for the taxpayers to be able to take a look at and vote on, every department has unfortunately had to go through a vetting process and take some things off their wish list. We are not putting them all on an override for every department to get everything that they want. So I think in fairness, and looking at this from a whole-town perspective, I would stop at the restoration and then look to the schools to find creative ways within that to perhaps address some of the click expansion or anything else that is critical, maybe move the monies around. The one seventy, absolutely, I don't think the security, I don't look at it as debatable, I think we need that. And the hardware amount, I would look to see if we could get the money in fiscal nineteen,